Good evening. Welcome to the 1,225th Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council and City Council after holding their own public hearing will make the final determinations to whether a petition is approved or denied. Planning Commission will hold the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determinations to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan tonight, which would be appropriate for tonight's agenda, is denied, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. DeNaro.
Here.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Is here.
Mr. Droes.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Is here.
Chair Magno is here.
Chair Wulsho.
Is here. Thank you. And also with us tonight, we have Mr. Uhazi from our City Planning Department along with Ms. Stephanie Reese, and they will be helping us with background information and answering some questions on these items that we may have. Also, of course, for the folks in our audience, we will have the petitioner come up and speak to this agenda item when it's appropriate, and then there will also be an opportunity for anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak for or against the petition to come forward after that. I'll prompt you along in the process, and then we'll make our decision. With that, we're going to begin with item number one on our public hearing agenda.
Petition 2025-01-02-01, submitted by Emon Enterprises LLC, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 6.06 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended to redevelop an existing commercial site, including adding service bays, renovating the interior and exterior of the building, and operating automobile repair facility at 27819 Plymouth Road located on the southwest corner of Plymouth and Cardwell Street in the northeast quarter of Section 36.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Uhazi.
Thank you. This is a request to renovate and operate automobile and light truck repair up to one ton, which is regulated under Section 6.06 of the zoning ordinance. As mentioned, it is located on the southwest corner of Plymouth and Cardwell Street. The existing zoning is C2 general business. To the north and northwest are commercial properties which are zoned C1 local business, while the northeast is zoned C2 as well. To the east across Cardwell Street is the Royal Motor Inn, which is zoned C2. To the south is the Thomas Elliott subdivision and is zoned N1 for neighborhood. And finally, to the west of the site is a small commercial building zoned C2. A little history on the site. The site was previously approved for light auto repair facility in 1971 and again in 1982. Although the use was never put into operation, the building was previously occupied by Mickey Shore Electronics, who was granted approval to expand the existing building in 1987, and the site currently sits vacant. The subject property is .37 acres in area with 148 feet of frontage on Plymouth Road and 110 feet along Cardwell Street. The existing building measures approximately 2,049 square feet with two driveways that provide access to the site, one on Plymouth Road and another off of Cardwell Street. The petition includes a floor plan. Parking requirements for automobile and truck repair facilities are required as two spaces for each workstation plus one space per employee. The floor plan shows three bays and three workstations that would operate up to three employees. The minimum required parking is nine for the three bays. The site plan, we have received an updated site plan since our study session. The new site plan shows three parallel parking spaces next to the Plymouth Road right-of-way and additional eight parking spaces along the western property line. The parking configuration on the plan shows five of these spaces are located in front of the site, and another 10 additional spaces are within the proposed fencing area. Under Section 6.06, all vehicles left at the facility for repair overnight must be stored within the building, and absolutely no dismantled, damaged, or unlicensed vehicles shall be permitted on the site. The ordinance also states that the total number of vehicles proposed to be stored shall be subject to recommendation by the Planning Commission and be approved by City Council. Another change from the study session is the dumpster enclosure has been moved from the rear of the site and attached to the northwest corner of the building. The site plan shows additional landscaping was added along Plymouth Road and Cardwell Street. Along Plymouth Road, there are 14 shrubs, two trees, which are located in front of the PRDA fencing, and an additional 16 shrubs located between the driveway and the corner. On Cardwell Street, the plan shows three deciduous trees and 10 shrubs. The shrub species are listed as boxwood, and the type of tree is not given, but the plan states that the specific species will be selected from the Livonia Approved Species list. The zoning ordinance requires the following on Plymouth Road: three deciduous trees or evergreen, two ornamental trees, and 24 shrubs; and along Cardwell Street, two deciduous trees or evergreen, one ornamental, and 10 shrubs. The site plan also shows updates to the existing and proposed fencing. The existing wooden fence at the rear of the property would be replaced with a six-foot-high masonry wall. The rest of the fencing is listed as being a six-foot-high vinyl privacy fence or block fence to match the proposed rear wall. No signage plans were submitted with this petition. On the elevations, the exterior finish would consist of burnished broad ground-facing concrete block and horizontal rain-screening siding. The existing stucco veneer would be replaced by brick veneer on the north and east walls. The canopy aluminum fascia and all associated framing would be removed and replaced with new aluminum or stone copying and fascia at the parapet. All the existing windows and doors would remain. On the south and west elevation, exterior brick or CMU walls will be patched and repaired. The new elevation plan shows the daylighting of existing windows that are currently bricked over. One new window is shown on the east elevation, and there are two additional windows shown on the north elevation. Additionally, the updated elevation plan identifies lighting that will be angled down at 45-degree angle. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I also have some correspondence.
Yes, if you'd like to read that for us?
From the Engineering Department, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time, but would like to note the following items. The subject parcel is assigned the address of 27819 Plymouth Road. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact this department once approvals have been obtained. The existing parcel is currently serviced by public sanitary sewer and water main. The submitted drawings do not include any proposed utility information or calculations, so we cannot comment on any proposed impacts to the existing system, but we do not believe the proposed usage will adversely affect the existing utilities. Should alterations to the existing service be required, the owner shall submit the drawings to the department to determine if permits will be required. Although the drawings do not indicate any future utility information, it should be noted that any proposed redevelopment other than building renovations will be required to provide stormwater improvements and retention per the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. Any disturbances with the Plymouth Road right-of-way will require permits to the Michigan Department of Transportation, including drive approach and sidewalk removal or replacements." This is signed Dave Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From the Fire Department, "The office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with the request to renovate a commercial building on the property located at the above referenced address. We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations. Evaluation for possible suppression system and fire alarm installation due to vehicles that are EV. A further detailed plan review will take place when the division receives an official plan set." Signed Brian Kukla, Fire Marshal. From the Police Department, "I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have no objections to the proposal." This is signed Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. From the Inspection Department, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed. The parking lot shall be repaired and restripped as necessary. Parking spaces shall be 10 feet wide and 20 feet deep and double striped. The van-accessible barrier-free parking shall be sized, signed, and marked in accordance with the Michigan Barrier Free Code. An enclosure of significant height to completely screen the dumpster is required on three sides of the waste receptacle with a solid gate on the fourth side. The height of the enclosure must be not less than six feet or at least one foot above the height of the dumpster, whichever is greater. The enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass, and when not in use, closed at all times. The enclosure must be constructed of the same compatible material and colors as the principal building in terms of texture and quality. A variance from the zoning board of appeals would be required for the proposed six-foot-tall vinyl fencing." This is signed Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. From our Accounting Department, "I have reviewed the address connected with the above-noted petition. As there are no outstanding amounts receivable, general or water and sewer, I have no objections to the proposal." Signed Connie Kuplo, Chief Accountant. From the Treasurer's Office, "All taxes are current for the property. If you have any additional questions, please contact me." Signed Susan Nash, City Treasurer. We also had some comments from the public.
Yes, there's a couple letters, I believe.
Yes.
I don't know if you want to read the whole thing. This, one of them is fairly lengthy. You may want to just summarize.
So there are two letters stating their concerns for having a auto repair facility within the neighborhood and how it may impact the properties, and with noise issues and traffic issues.
Yes, and those letters were from Mr. Nicholas on Cardwell and also from Kelly Richard on Cavell.
Correct, and you guys did receive a copy of these this evening.
Correct, yes. Is there anything else, Mr. Uhazi?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Ms. Reese, just a question for you. You don't see this picture on the TV on the outside, do you?
I do not.
I don't think anybody's in the booth broadcasting. I just looked, and I don't think we're live, so...
I didn't.
I don't know if they fell asleep or what. Thank you, I appreciate that. We'll continue on with the meeting, though, because the show must go on, as they say. Is our petitioner here?
Yes.
If you want to come forward to our podium. Is there any questions for our planning staff before we hear? Mr. Droes?
Mr. Joe, I do have a couple of quick ones.
If you would go ahead.
I guess a question on the landscaping. Do we count landscaping in the right-of-way towards the site, or does it need to be on the site proper?
We count on the site proper, but there has been cases where if the space isn't available, that can be counted or in lieu of some of the stuff that we would require.
And then one other question. There was a note on the building official regarding a variance being required for the fence. Is that related to the vinyl fence or the wall?
I've read that as the fencing along the west of the property from adjacent to the other commercial properties.
Okay. Any idea why? Is that just typical or?
That's just the typical fencing process.
Okay. Got it. And then last question. Did we receive any information regarding the masonry wall? And maybe the petitioner can offer that, but I didn't see anything in the packet about the materials.
No details about materials, just that it would be changed to a masonry wall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Droes. Any other questions?
Excuse me, I'll work on, I don't know why this went out when...
Yeah, I think we got our broadcast going, though.
We went live.
That may have knocked out your feed there.
Yeah.
I'll let you work on that. Thank you, Ms. Reese, for checking on that, too. Any other questions for our planning staff?
I do, I do.
Mr. Bonjero?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jacob, so in the ordinance 6.06, they can't have any cars outside? They all have to be pulled inside the building at the end of the day?
Unless it is waived by the Planning Commission and Council. So you kind of stipulate that based off the plan, they can keep X amount of cars.
Because it's kind of confusing. It says no, all vehicles that are left to city for repair overnight must be stored within the building, and then it says planning or council can dictate how many numbers are stored inside. Like, it's kind of...
It is a little confusing, but if the Commission and Council decide to waive that, they can park the set number of cars outside of, in the rear of the parking lot.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's it. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for staff? Okay, I think we covered all that. Thank you, sir, for being here tonight. You're our petitioner. If you want to start with your name and address for our record.
Mohamed Isa. The property address is 27819 Plymouth Road, Livonia, Michigan, 48150.
Excellent, thank you, sir. And what would you like to tell us about your business that you want to operate here?
Well, the business, I believe, has been auto-related since it was built. I think it was originally a gas station with auto service when it was originally built. I would like to continue the auto service, but, you know, include auto repair. There's currently three existing bay doors. The third door is hidden. I showed you guys pictures last week. So that overhead door is still there. There's two in-ground hoists that will be removed and above hoist instead. So I would like to operate it as auto repair, light auto repair, you know, maintenance, brakes, tune-ups, tires, mufflers, you know, exhaust, whatever, just maintenance, like the Midas down the street, basically. As far as, I think Patrick was trying to zone in on the two trees, there's two Wayne County trees that are between Plymouth Road and the sidewalk. So when we did the landscaping, I spoke with Jacob, I told him that there's two already existing. I know they're not on the city side, but there's two on there. So we thought, maybe we'll present that we'll only plant the three in the front. That'll be a total of five. But if more are required, you know, we don't have a problem putting more trees. As far as that fence in the back, the whole reason to enclose that fence is to leave some cars outside overnight. The three parallel parking spots that we're proposing in the front, those are only to be used during hours of operation. So you can see that on the site plan. So if there is anything that's going to stay overnight, it'll be behind the wall. Nobody will see them from Plymouth Road at all.
It'll be in the fenced area.
In the fenced area, correct.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to tell us about your business before we go to questions?
Not really, I mean, unless you have any questions.
Oh, we'll see what we have here. Any questions for our petitioner? Ms. DeNaro?
Yeah, I have some questions. So since we saw the site plan at the study session, there's quite a few changes. Can you talk me through specifically the fencing, the lighting, and the landscaping, please?
Sure. Well, the fencing, the rear wall Jacob told us must be masonry, so we have to put that masonry. Depending on the pricing and, you know, how it's going to turn out, I assume the east and west, you know, I don't know whether I was going to go vinyl or masonry to match the rear wall yet until I see what the estimates are for that. But the rear wall must be masonry because it attaches to a residence, so that's why we changed that to masonry instead of vinyl. The landscaping was updated because it needed to be beefed up, as Jacob told us, so we tried to meet all of the ordinance requirements. I believe we met the shrub requirements on the north and the east side. We met the tree requirements on the east side on Cardwell Street. And on the north side, if you include the two trees that are pre-existing from Wayne County, then we should meet those requirements as well. If you need more trees or shrubs, you know, I'm not opposed to it. Lighting is going to be, nothing is going to shine towards the street. They're going to be 45 degrees or down. I was planning on just having building-mounted lights, but I think Jacob told me that he would like a pole. So if I do put a pole in the back area where the fence is, it'll be towards the rear residence facing the building. So the rear resident will not have any visual effects. And another thing, noise complaints. So noise, you know, Mickey Shore used to install audio equipment and alarms with boom boxes and kicker boxes and stuff. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with what that is, but I don't believe an auto repair shop will generate nearly as much sound as Mickey Shore's used to. And all of the tools that are used these days, or 90% of them, are electronic these days. So all the impacts and everything, and air ratchets have been converted to electrical tools, like your drills and stuff at home. So there's no more loud air tools. There will be an air compressor, but it's going to be only used for the tire machine and for airing up vehicles. So, and Mickey Shore had a air compressor at all times in their facility. So I don't think it's going to cause noise disturbance, to be honest. And as far as smell, I think I seen the report, somebody smelled pollution or whatever. This is not an auto body shop, so there's no paint work, there's no bondo work, you know, there's no fumes.
Just a follow-up question. So there's going to be three bay doors, two facing Plymouth, one facing the neighborhood?
Correct. That's accurate.
What, are they all used for, can you tell me about the uses? Are they different, or is it just where the customer?
They're all the same, depending on how many vehicles you have to work on yet.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, you're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. DeNaro. Any other questions? Mr. Ventura?
Just to follow up on Ms. DeNaro's question, so there's no bay door facing south, facing the house behind you?
No, no, no doors facing south, just the one on the east.
So the only bay door that is not facing Plymouth Road is facing Cardwell on the east?
Correct.
And on the other side of Cardwell from there is the motel.
Correct.
Not a residence.
Correct, it's a motel.
So you really don't have a bay door facing anybody's house?
Not, no.
Okay. Do you own a tow truck? Are you going to have a tow truck there?
I do own a tow truck. Yes, I do own a tow truck.
And, why do you have this truck? What do you do with that? Is that...
I have, well, I had two other businesses. I told you I was selling the one in Redford.
Right.
So I do have a tow truck that's going to stay with me. Am I going to leave it here? Am I going to leave it in Plymouth? I don't know. But if I do leave it here, or if it does be here, it'll be behind the brick wall. It's a little record, it's not a...
In the fenced area. How many vehicles do you anticipate would be in the fenced area on an ongoing basis? In other words, if we were to approve this and say we will authorize three vehicles out there overnight within the fenced area, would that be sufficient?
Well, I hope to be a lot busier than that, but I don't know. I would think, I would expect at least 10 overnight in the rear, you know, and I'm trying to enclose this. There's other auto repair shops down Plymouth Road. I know they're probably grandfathered in, and they have no privacy fences at all, and they have cars in their lot overnight all the time. But I'm hoping I'll be way more successful than three behind the building. Now, I can bring two per bay if I raise one up and stick one underneath it, maybe, if they're little cars, but do I really want to do that all winter long and, you know, rainy days and stuff? I don't know. I'd rather avoid that. The whole point of putting that wall up or that privacy fence is...
To hide the cars from...
Correct, so it's not a disturbance or a nuisance or a eyesore. So that's the whole point of putting that fence. If no cars are going to be allowed outside, then I can avoid spending all that money on that fence.
What do you anticipate your hours of operation to be?
Generally, my hours are nine to six, but if I have to put something out in record, I would like to say eight to seven, just in case someone gets there a little early.
Five days a week?
Monday through Saturday.
Monday, six days a week.
Yeah. Well, Saturday usually 10 to 5, 10 to 4. Well, again, I'd rather give you the...
Close on Sunday.
Close on Sunday, yes.
And Jacob, did we have all the pictures? Did they come back up again for everybody of the exterior? So the total exterior of the building is going to be resurfaced with brick?
No, just the north and the east. The west and the south are going to be fixed and painted. They're really not that bad, it's just cinder block. But there's no point to re-phase those, I believe, and spend that kind of money when those two sides are hidden, you know, nobody sees them.
The interior outside of the building is going to be renewed?
The north side and the east side will be updated, updated and brand-new with veneer. And the west and south was going to be painted. It'll look new, but it's not going to be, I'm not going to veneer it, is what I'm saying.
Understood. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Droes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for making some of the updates to the plan that we noted at the study session, but I will ask about a couple ones that I didn't see.
Sure.
So we had talked a little bit about potentially reducing some of the continuous driveway along Cardwell and introducing green space. Maybe talk through that decision about why that wasn't included?
Correct. I spoke with Jacob about that, and I don't mind putting the grass there. It's a very small area. I thought if somebody were to park there, it's more money for Livonia because they can ticket him, you know what I mean? Because I'm never going to park there, and I don't assume anyone will. It really is a small area. It's not big, it's not made for a vehicle. My thing is the cement there is 12 inches thick. This is an old gas station, and back in the 50s, they were putting the cement 12 inches thick. On top of that, you have four inches of asphalt. So do I want to cut through that and put grass? I don't know. Unless I build like an above-ground garden, you know, I don't know what the name of it is, but I can make something like that to go there. But I really don't want to rip up the cement or floor. And those sidewalks, by the way, somebody changed them. They're not three feet, they're like five feet wide over there.
Okay. And then the three parking spaces in front, again, the site is overparked. I think Jacob, Mr. Uhazi, said nine spaces was required. We have 15. Was there any consideration given to giving more green space along the Plymouth Road frontage?
We could, but the same thing applied about the cement and the asphalt, really is thick, it really is. I mean, I'm not making this up. If somebody comes out there and takes a sample, you'll see. It's not easy to just rip and plant grass.
Understood, I was just asking about that.
Yeah, no problem. I was hoping we can waive that variance, but I don't know. If you need me to build an above-ground garden or like landscape area between the building and the side bay, I'm not opposed to that, because no car can fit there anyway. I really don't feel like ripping the ground, you know, that's all.
Understood. The other one, you touched on lighting, so you mentioned that you potentially would add some light poles in the back of the site, potentially, or is that...
If need be. Again, I'm not worried about theft, you know, I think Livonia's pretty safe, and if it's going to be a masonry wall and it's going to be locked, you know, I don't think I'll have a problem. But if I do, then it'll be against the rear, what is now the wooden fence facing Plymouth Road, either at a 45 or down.
Okay.
If we have to put, but I was hoping to put just building-mounted lights.
Okay. And again, the point of that was, and I did see them on the back of the building, was really just more so for the neighbors, that if that is, it is 45, but it's still a line of sight, so...
Sure.
Ideally, if you could incorporate some...
Then, yeah, I don't mind, we can do that.
Okay. And then I did want to ask you, the decision to move the dumpster forward, could you speak about that?
Yeah, that came up with my engineer. If we're going to put a masonry wall and a fence in the front, some of these garbage companies, I see them coming at 4, 5, 6 in the morning, even before we get there. So how am I going to let them in if that gate is going to be locked, the front gate? Because I don't expect to leave that gate to get in the back open or unlocked at all times. So I would like to lock it. That's the only means of security I would have. So to get around that, we had to move it up front, so we don't have to be there if the dumpster guy comes.
Okay.
That was the only reason why we brought it up.
Understood. And the plan notes asphalt or gravel for the parking lot in back. And I'll tell you what I'm getting at with this concern. So obviously, we're going to have vehicles that, you know, potentially have some problems that might be leaking, whether it's fuel, oil, whatever the liquid might be. I think our hope would be that be impervious surface, like asphalt or concrete.
Sure.
And then I guess a question, have you looked at the drainage? Because right now, I think that area kind of runs off to the street. Do you plan to do storm sewer and potentially water quality for removing oils and sediments?
I want to stay away from any stormwater, because Wayne... I want to stay, stay away from any stormwater because Wayne County, I, I think requires some underground detention. So I want to stay away from doing anything stormwater. That's why I wasn't expanding the building or doing anything with the building itself other than refacing it.
Okay. But you do intend to manage the drainage within your site and not put it out to the street?
To be honest with you, I haven't even looked at the drainage to see if there's any sewers or anything on the property. I never went back there, really. Not as of yet, or not, you know, I mean, I went back there, but I didn't inspect for that, to be honest. I just looked at the yard and seen how it was.
Okay.
But I can take a look and get back to you, I don't know.
And then I guess my last question on the fencing, obviously, it's adjoining with the neighbors. Have you had conversations about the material that you'd use for that? Do you have samples that?
No, not yet. But, not yet. The only thing I know that it's going to be a split face, where it's not just going to be a regular cinder block, you know, flat cinder block. So it's going to be a split face, I think he called it, where it's got some type of texture designed to it.
Okay. I think that covers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dros. Any other questions for Mr. Issa?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kiermagnow.
I do, I do have a couple of questions. What is going to happen here different than what happens at your Plymouth property, Plymouth Township property, and your Redford properties?
Well, the Plymouth Township property, I'm still, all my plans are with the blue, with the engineer, and I had a problem with that because that site was contaminated. So I'm still working with Eagle. I never moved to, to refinish that one yet. I have a problem with Eagle. We got to resolve the environmental issue first. So that one, I haven't updated or nothing yet.
And I see, I see there's a car wash there and a, and a repair shop in the front. How long have you owned that?
I've owned that for two and a half, maybe three years now. But I bought it in the condition it is, so my plan was to renew that one and make it look good too. But that one's taken too long with Eagle, so.
Are there any repair activity happening there now?
No, there's no, I mean, yeah, I go every, it's by appointment, so I only go there by appointment.
Okay, so you do repairs there currently?
Yes, I do do repairs. But I don't do nothing to the buildings or anything.
Okay, so that's basically a, a non-operating site at this point?
Just by appointment, so very minimal.
Okay. And now your Redford site, what, how will that differ from this site?
Well, which Redfords are you, are you looking at? I have two in Redford. The one that I'm selling-
Well, here, I'll tell you which one here.
Two, three, five, one, zero, or two, four, six, four, five?
Two, four, six, four, five, Plymouth Road.
That one is a family-owned business, so it's not just me. That's my parents, my siblings, that's a family-owned business. So this other one's going to be myself. Plymouth is myself. That one there, that's a used car dealer and parts and auto repair and collision. So we're not applying for all of that here. So this one's going to be strictly auto repair.
Okay, so the other property is, is, it's, it's got a variety of uses, is that it?
It's got multiple uses, correct. It's got part, used parts, it's got a used car dealer, auto repair, and collision.
Okay, so you, you don't know how many cars you want to keep on this property? You said maybe ten, maybe more, depends how business is.
Correct.
Who will the onus be on to inspect this property to make sure there's a, if the number's six, the number's six? Who will the onus be on to make sure that there's not twenty cars jammed in this fenced area?
I'm sorry, what was the, who's the, what's the?
Who will be responsible to, to, to come over there and, and count cars if they're, if we give you six and there's twenty jammed in there? What, I mean, it seems like a ordinance or inspection nightmare compared to what I saw at Plymouth Road down in Redford Township.
Well, yeah.
If, if it's anything even close to that, I got a huge problem with this.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. Again, that Plymouth Township, the Redford location that you're looking, you're not looking at the other Redford that I owned personally, two, three, five, one, zero. You can take a look at that one if you like.
It'd be nice to have that address before we got here tonight. You told me two, four, six, four, five.
Well, that's because I told you I was, I saw, I'm in the process of selling the two, three, five, one, zero. I'm actually-
What is it?
Two, three, five, one, zero.
Two, three, five, one, zero. Plymouth Road?
Plymouth Road, correct. Yeah, that's Redford as well.
Is that this one?
No, no. This one he's talking about is my family business. Oh, yeah, this one here. Yep, that's the one. So that one there is, that one was myself as well, me alone. It's actually, you could probably see the listing of it for sale and it's pending and it's sold. So that's what I expect this place to look like. I don't know if you can see the front view. You know, my building looks brand new and presentable, and it's not like the one that you see on two, four, six, four, five. I gave you that address as well because it's my family's. I don't want to hide nothing. Now, the one, the other one you see in Plymouth is, it's got four licenses, collision, auto parts, auto repair, and used car dealer. So this is not going to be anything like that at all. You could take a look at the one in Plymouth Township as well. You can see I don't have vehicles in that. I have an acre and a half if I want to-
Well, I did, I did, I did look at Plymouth. I looked at both of them.
Yes.
Because you gave me the addresses and I, I, in my travels, I checked them both. Plymouth Township, we got a couple unlicensed cars sitting in the front yard. And again, that's here prohibited in our, potentially prohibited in our ordinance, and yet there's two unlicensed cars sitting there. They look like they haven't moved in, my guess would be sometime, so.
And Plymouth Road?
No, Plymouth Township.
Yeah, yeah, Plymouth Township, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
There should be only one car and it doesn't move, but it's okay.
There's two, there's two. Neither one has license plate on it.
Okay.
So anyhow, that's my concern. That's all I got.
No problem. I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Kiermagnow. Any other questions for our petitioner? We've exhausted their questions up here. Anything else that you'd like to tell us, Mr. Issa, before we move on?
No, I think I addressed everything.
Okay. Let me see if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against? Feel free to come to either one of these podiums, whichever one's more comfortable for you. We'll ask that you start with your name and address so we know who you were speaking with.
All right. My name is Jeff Nicholas. I have the property just south of the former Mickey Shore.
Thank you, Mr.-
One, one, five, six, three, Cardwell. I, I do have mixed feelings on this. The building is a tough building to put a business in because of what it is. And it, it's a very small piece of property. You've answered a lot of my questions tonight, and the board has as well. The wood privacy fence, I built that fence. That's my, I, I say my fence because I built it. But if he's going to put a six-foot cement fence along there, that's better than my wood fence. You know, it's, it's going to close it off. The one concern I have is we started out with zero cars outside, all the cars inside. And now it's gone up to potentially ten cars outside. So it, it evolved as the night went on from zero to ten. I understand you got to have a few cars, and I wouldn't have any issues with three, four, five, maybe even up to six cars. I, I didn't see, I couldn't, yeah, this right here. So the back of the building, I can't, he wants with asphalt gravel there, and right now, that is grass. And then heading towards Cardwell is grass. So basically, from the west edge of the building, heading east, on the backside of the building is, is all grass right now. I would like that to be left grass, even though he's got a wall there. That's my living area in the backyard, basically. Even though I'm, I do use the whole backyard, the parking lot area doesn't bother me. That's always been a parking lot with Mickey Shore. So I, like I said, I do have some concerns about the noise. Mickey Shore did have their noise, but for the most part, they were pretty respectful. I never did hear an air compressor run, and Mickey Shore, they really didn't have a useful So that does concern me that the air compressor be running. Now, I will say, if you follow through with all the plans to do the front face, the side, the shrubbery, the six-foot fence, it looks like a beautiful building. And that building is, you're probably going to, it needs updating. So as far as this business going in, I, I'm fifty-fifty. I was against it coming in here tonight. I'm still not a hundred percent for it. Like I said, I'm fifty-fifty. I just hope that if the city does approve this, that everything that was said tonight, the city follows through with it before they give them a permit of occupancy. And like I said, I would like that area to remain grass. That's my opinion, because that would give it a little more separation. And then my other concern is I like the dumpsters being up front. I worry about where they're going to store the junk parts to take off vehicles, just not laying around in the parking lot. I'm sure they're going to have a scrap bin or something. The property's not that big, and it could get cluttered really fast. I think that the tow truck was the other issue. I have seen the tow truck there, and he is correct. It's, it's a, it's a smaller tow truck. I think it's more based on like a truck platform. But it's not something I don't think, and when I've talked to my neighbors, it's not something people want to see. So if he had it more maybe up towards Plymouth Road to where the building was hiding it, then, then it's, it's not a site. But it looks like, if I'm correct, he wants to fence the whole property. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. So he's going to be hiding a lot of it as well. So like I said, I'm, I came in here totally against it. You've kind of pushed me fifty-fifty. I'm not a hundred percent for it. And it's a tough, it's a tough building to occupy. You know, it's, it's not a food restaurant. And he's, he's looking like he's going to put a lot of money into this. So my biggest thing would be the noise, not being able to park anything on Cardwell, of cour-, you know, keep the residential residential. And if I can make a suggestion on the hours, nine to six. I think that'd be a fair recommendation from me, at least.
Okay.
So I think that covers it all. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Nicholas. I know you wrote us a really nice letter as well with a lot of thoughts, and you've expressed your thoughts tonight, which we appreciate. You know, it's, we, we always like to know how people feel if they're for or against, but also you've given a lot of suggestions too of things that could be done. So we appreciate all your thoughts. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Feel free to come forward. We have a couple, a couple folks. You can all come forward.
How are you doing, folks? My name is William Clark, and I live at one, one, three, six, nine, Cardwell, which is a few doors down. I've kind of become the reluctant unofficial spokesman for the residents on Cardwell Street and the surrounding area. It wasn't my intention, but it's just kind of, I just kind of put my, my thoughts out online that I was, that I was not too happy about this, that I didn't think it was a good idea. And some people reached out to me. I started a petition. I have forty-two signatures, and I can attest that the majority, the vast majority are from people who live on Cardwell or live in close proximity or live in the wider Livonia area. So I think that's pretty significant. It's not as if there's one or two people. I can't say the whole road. I can't give, you know, but it's, it's a significant number of people in the area who, who, who don't want this. So I think, like, I just put together like a, a kind of a small, it's, it's from me, but I think it kind of expresses the, the kind of the general feeling of where we're at. So like, when you live in a busy populated area, like, you expect to hear noise, you expect trash cans, you expect car alarms, you expect dogs to bark. You know, that's, these are the things that go along with living in a, in a busy neighborhood. And this is admittedly a commercial lot, and it is admittedly a, a lot that was used previously for, for some sort of light auto. Mickey Shore, now, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't put it in the bracket that it was a, anywhere close to being like an auto shop, which is being proposed. But it's, it's a, it's a commercial lot that's in a wholly residential area. It's a very busy, very vibrant community. You have Cardwell Street on both sides, but you also have a motel with the bedrooms are ten yards walk from where this property is. And the kind of noise, I think, that will emanate from a, a very heavy machine-oriented business like this is not something that we, we really want to hear or put up with. I don't think we need to do any tests or investigations or, or study to know, like pneumatic drills, service bays, loading doors. And I think the most, I think the biggest worry for people on Cardwell is the tow truck scenario. Nobody wants tow trucks. They look bad, and they're noisy. There's a kind of a perception that goes with tow trucks, and we're not too happy about that. I think the parking situation is also a big bone of contention. The pictures here and the plans we see, I don't think it do, it does just as if you actually walk up to the site. It is tiny, and it's very hard to, to visualize. I know we're saying like, you know, we're going to keep two or three cars overnight, but now it's gone up to ten. You can't park on Cardwell. The only place for surplus parking is, is, or sorry, or you can't park on Plymouth. The only, the only space for surplus parking is Cardwell, which is, which is a residential street. Parking is tight there as it is. You're lucky sometimes to be able to park outside your house. And it's kind of worrying that there's a potential that there could be the cars. I'm not saying this gentleman would do that, but the potential that that could happen is slightly worrying. I just don't think the site is, is, I want, I want to let it be known as well, nobody is anti-business. Nobody's saying we, we want empty buildings or, or, you know, not in our backyard sort of thing. We do want to see this site used. We want to see, you know, something to be, to be, to be put in here, but to give some, I think on a wider kind of zoning sort of prospect is, there's, I counted eight auto repair businesses on a half-mile stretch on, on Plymouth Road. There's not a huge, no one's crying out for an auto shop on, on Plymouth Road. It's, it's a sea of auto shops. And I think there's like a dozen auto-related businesses on, on Plymouth. And I think that the, the very least that could happen is that these established businesses that have been there for a long time could potentially see, you know, a loss of business to, to what they have established already. And in the worst-case scenario, I think that we'll see a business fail. And I don't think it's, you know, a good omen for this council or for us as a community to, to greenlight businesses that we know have the potential to fail. And I just say, like, to, to make it clear, like, you know, again, I just want to reiterate, it's not, not in our backyard, it's not us trying to be snobby, or, you know, or, we understand that when you live in a busy area like this, that there's going to be noise and so on. We just think that it's, it's too much, and it's a lot for us to kind of, we don't want for us to kind of, we don't wanna see the values of our, of our property go down. That's probably the, the big worrying concern. So, um, if you want the petition, I can, I can hand it up.
If you'd like to hand it over to Ms. Reese after you're done, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Yuhasi.
While he answered it, I just wanna clarify one thing that was, uh, discussed earlier. The, reviewing the ordinance, just so we're all clear. Um, storage of, what is prohibited on-site is storage of undamaged or, uh, or, um, disabled vehicles. The, um, vehicles and any repairs must be done inside. This commission and city council can dictate how many cars that are waiting repairs can be stored outside. That's the clarification. So it's, they couldn't just put junk cars out there, but they can put cars that are waiting to be, um, stored outside. I just wanted to clarify that.
Right. And as, as was noted earlier, we can determine the number of
Yes.
those vehicles.
Yes.
Which we haven't done yet. We've, we've, as, as some of the, the folks in the audience have pointed out, it's by default zero. And, uh, petitioners ask for ten and we'll see where, where this lands if, if we, uh, choose something between zero and ten. So you have to be determined. Uh, but thank you for the comments. Uh, there's one more gentleman that I believe wishes to speak. Good evening, sir.
Evening. So, um, I volunteer as a president of Plymouth Circle Civic Association.
Okay.
My name is Steve Alexander. I'm at nine-nine-one-nine Deering. I promised our residents I would come up and share some of their quick thoughts, uh, but also I'll just follow that with a recap of what you guys already showed and I, and I think is fantastic. So, uh, in short, um, what you've heard, in addition to what you've heard here is, uh, the notion that, you know, as we build businesses on Plymouth Road, ideally we want residents to want to go to those businesses, right? So like, can we attract more of things that we're gonna wanna go attend? So like restaurants and such, right? Clearly this parcel is not going to be a, uh, a restaurant or, or any place that you would go, um, after work, right? So it's, it, from what we heard tonight, I mean, it has to be automotive or something like that. It's just, is what it is. Um, so I'm actually really encouraged by what you all showed and shared tonight, especially with the, um, trash. I know early we said one of the concerns was smells. And we're like, well, why would there be a concern for smell when there's automotive? But I think really that concern for smell was the trash, right? So most businesses have their trash in the very back, right? So that would be against Mr. Nicholas's house, which would not be awesome. So if it's near the front in a container, uh, where that smell isn't carrying into our neighborhood, I think that is fantastic. So, um, I love, I love what the petitioner presented today. Uh, we can move forward with, uh, making sure the trash is located as he suggested. I would, I would deeply appreciate that and I'm sure our residents would too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. And we know he's official because he's got a coat that matches his association. So that's really, that's very good. Uh, anyone else wishing to speak on this item, for or against? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening.
Alan Bates. Do you, what, personal address?
Uh, yeah, residence.
Two-seven-zero-seven-six Meadowbrook.
Thank you.
You had asked the question. I own the building next to it.
Okay.
He hasn't asked me, but, uh, a wall will be fine. So just to clarify that.
You're the business, uh, west or east?
West.
West, okay.
Actually, the two buildings west.
Okay, very good.
Which is?
There was some discussion in our study meeting, because we see that the property line, at least as indicated on these, uh, surveys, appears to be kind of
Halfway through the-
the middle of your driveway.
Yeah. It's gonna stay there?
Uh, it is what it is, uh, but
It seems like it was an easement.
He's not gonna encroach on that in any way.
It seems like it was an easement. That's when I bought it. It kinda seemed like half and half.
Yeah, we're not gonna make him do anything to, that would impede your driveway.
I appreciate that. That would be good. Cause it's rent-, I, I'm just the owner.
Sure.
It's rented, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Alright, we've heard from everyone in our audience. I won't, don't believe there's anyone left to speak. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Isa, would you like to come up and address anything that you heard? Again, we don't create debates between people, but we do wanna give you an opportunity to address any concerns that, uh, or, or issues that you may be able to resolve.
Of course. Um, personally, well, the way the building is gonna look afterwards, I think it'll improve people's home values as opposed to how it looks right now. I think it's really affecting their home values as it is. There's no windows and it looks like a prison. Um, I would just like to say, and I'm not trying to be offensive or anything here, but, uh-
Please don't.
The whole, the whole point of putting the fence is to leave some cars back there. And they will not be junk cars, I can assure you. You can come out and ticket me, uh, you know, tickets or, you know, violations every day. I don't, you know, there's not gonna be any junk cars back there. Of that, I assure you. The whole point of spending that kind of money on a wall like that is to be able to have at least ten cars back there. If all the cars have to come in the building, or four or five, which I can manage somewhere, then there's no reason to build this wall. We can, we'll continue with all the other plans, but the wall itself, that's a lot of money to build on a masonry wall. As far as, uh, street, I'm never gonna park in the street. Everything is, there's no off-site, you know, parking. There's ample parking for what I'm gonna do, you know, for my customers and myself. So there's, no one ever has to worry about me parking on Plymouth Road or Cardwell Street or the adjacent property as well.
Okay. Alright, is there any other questions from any of our commissioners for our petition before we finish? Mr. Ventura?
So the, the topic of the compressor came up again during the comments. Can you clarify how often this compressor is gonna be used, that you're gonna have?
Well, let me say, Mickey Shaw does have a compressor in there, I assure you, and it's still there.
Very long gone.
Yeah, 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 I know, I know.
We're talking about you.
I know, I know. Air compressor. All of my tools are electric tools, electric impacts, drills, whatever. The only equipment I would have in there that uses the compressor is the tire machine itself. And if I have to air up tires or blow some air for some reason. How often? I wouldn't say too often.
So this is not a, this is not a compressor that runs the whole time you're open?
No, no, not at all, not at all. It'll be, it'll probably turn on once a week, to be honest. Once, it depends on how many tires I do, to be honest. Now, if the old hoist that were coming out of the ground were unused, then yeah, it'll be kicking on every time you go to lift up the car. But those hoists are not gonna be used. So I'm gonna put electric above-ground hoist. So the only time that compressor will come on is if you're actually physically using the tire machine or airing up some tires and it has to get low enough to kick back on. So you, you have to be using a lot of air for it to kick back on.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Mr. Long?
Thank you. Um, so I wanna understand the car storage aspect better than I, than I do. You're doing small repairs, like the, like a Tuffy muffler type of thing.
Correct.
Um, so brakes and things like that. People work, they drop their car off in the morning, they leave it there, but they come back and get it at the end of the day, right? And at least most of them are going to. So, I mean, I, how many are you gonna really need to store overnight? I mean, if, if, if we gave you the ability for, to have ten, is there really gonna be ten there? Or are you just gonna have one or two there overnight? How does that work?
I mean, I would like to have the ten just in case I do reach that threshold where I do. So I don't wanna, I'd ra-, again, I'd rather do the maximum than the minimum. So when I told you nine to six, I said, let's say eight to seven, just in case anyone ever goes in early or anyone has to stay late. But generally, my hours are nine to six. So I would always ask for the maximum and hope I use the minimum. Now, there may never, there may be, you know, months, I mean, the gentleman, uh, Sam said he looked at Plymouth, I only have two vehicles out there. I have an acre and a half. There's only, you know, well, there's only one, but there were two. So, you know, am I, are there gonna be vehicles there? Am I gonna use ten at all times? I don't know. But I would like to say that just so it's on record.
Sure. I, it, that makes sense to me. I mean, I, I just, um, I guess with a, with the shop with three bays and, you know, I, you know your business. I, I don't, I don't know the, the business model that well. I just don't know how many you would, you would need to have and how long they would have to be there. Again, so if you're, if you're doing breaks, it's one, uh, a few-hour job, right? And they, they're, it shouldn't take them, you know, I could see where it was there, maybe there over one night, but it shouldn't be there more than one night, right?
Well, I mean, I'm, I can do the zero cars and remove the fence. I don't mind.
No, no, I, I hear you. I, I've, I've heard that and I understand. I'm, again, I'm just trying to figure out the, the, the duration of it and as well as the, the need for-
I don't know, but I, but, you know, I don't wanna tell you anything, you know, but there's the oil change in that Phoenix down on Plymouth. If you drive by right now, I'm sure they have.
But, yeah.
I know, you know. I wanna do it the right way and I'm letting you know.
I want you to be set up to, to succeed if, if we're gonna approve this business there. Again, I'm just trying to understand the business model. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Mr. Ventura?
I'll follow up on Mr. Long's comments. And so as I'm looking at the site plan that Mr. Yuhasi has up on the screen, I count seven parking places behind the fence west of the building. Is that correct?
Well, on that plan, it shows that, I don't know why my engineer doesn't do it, but if you remember, I was telling you guys last week, currently there's fourteen parking spots there. So even if I don't pave and I leave it grass as the neighbor-
My, my point is, you already have seven places behind the fence.
I think there's more than that right now. On the plan, yes, okay.
There's seven along the west.
And so if we were, if we were to allow you to have ten, you could put three spaces exactly behind the building and taking into consideration the comments of the gentleman whose house is to the south of you.
Yeah.
You could leave the majority of the grass behind the building and still have your ten outside parking.
Sure. And go back to what Patrick-
And that could be designed in cooperation with the planning staff.
Correct. And think about what Patrick was saying. So I don't mess with any of the stormwater or anything. I'll leave the grass there if, if need be. But again, I didn't see it, so I have to go back and look if there is.
Great. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions? Uh, just one for you, sir. Uh, in regards to scrap storage, uh, you're gonna have tires and other things that, uh, are gonna come off vehicles. Where are you gonna store that?
You know, I spoke with Jacob. He never got back to me. I was asking him about, uh, those storage containers. He was gonna ask somebody, I don't know who exactly, and see if we can put one on there. Cause I was telling him the same thing, that there's really no storage. So I, I guess till we get an update, I don't know.
We still have to make sure with inspection, but I, I doubt that would be a possibility.
You, so you're thinking no?
I, I don't think they would, uh, allow that.
Okay. Oh, yeah, so then I would, I don't know then, right now. I might, I might get a, I have a dump trailer that I can bring and leave it back there and throw everything in the dump trailer. It's like, uh, I'll say four feet. Then every time it gets full, I can take it to the scrapyard and scrap it.
Okay.
But, I don't know. I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get there. I was hoping I can get the container, but, uh, we'll see what happens.
Okay, well, that's, that's a, it's a very important, uh, topic of consideration for us to think about and
Sure.
issue that, uh, residents raised, and I think it's a very valid one. So I'm glad that you, uh, let us know where you stand on that so far. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
Um, anyone else with any questions? If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing and a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura?
If I can find it. I'll offer an approving resolution that the request to develop an existing commercial site, including adding service bays, renovating the interior and exterior of the building, and operating an automobile repair facility at twenty-seven-eight-nineteen Plymouth Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval for the following reasons. Number one, the site plan identified as sheet number A three dot zero received January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five by Yohanna Design Consulting is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that the elevation plan identified as sheet number A two received January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five by Yohanna Design and Consulting is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number three, landscaping species shall be selected to the selection of the planning department and shall conform with the ordinance requirements, which may be satisfied by existing trees in the right of way. Jacob, you good with that?
Yeah.
Uh, number four, the parking lots should be repaired and restripped as necessary. Parking spaces shall be ten feet wide, twenty feet deep and double striped. And five, the van-accessible, barrier-free parking space shall be sized, signed, and marked in accordance with the Michigan Barrier Free Code. Number six, an enclosure of sufficient height to completely screen the dumpster, as it has been relocated, is required on three sides of the waste receptacle with a solid gate on the foreside. The height of the enclosure shall be not less than six feet or at least one foot above the height of the dumpster. Excuse me, whichever is greater. The enclosure gate shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass, and when not in use, closed at all times. The enclosure must be constructed of the same or comparable material and colors as the principal building in terms of texture and quality. A variance from the zoning board of appeals would be required for the proposed six-foot-tall vinyl fencing proposed on the east and west sides of the enclosed parking area and the south side of the enclosed parking area. Number eight, that all light fixtures shall not exceed twenty feet in height and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. Number nine, any vehicles left on the premises overnight must be in operable condition and not junk vehicles and must be stored inside the building whenever practicable or parked in designated parking spaces as shown on the approved site plan, with a maximum of ten vehicles located outside, seven of which shall be on the existing paved parking area and three of which shall be as close as practicable to the south wall of the existing building so that the existing grass area south of the building may, may be maintained to the greatest possible extent. Number ten, that should be no outdoor storage of auto parts, equipment, scrap materials, waste petroleum products, junked, unlicensed or inoperable vehicles, or other similar items in connection with this operation. And the overhead doors, when not in use for vehicles entering or exiting the service facility, shall always be closed. Number eleven, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number twelve, that no LED lighting, light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on-site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. Number thirteen, the overall average illumination for the parking lot shall be one-foot candle as provided under section seven-point-two-two of the zoning ordinance. Number fourteen, that unless approved by proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers or sponsored vehicles designed to attract attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited. Number fifteen, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. And number sixteen, pursuant to section thirteen dot one-three of the Livonia zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for a period of one year from the date of approval by the city council. And unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period. And I would invite any of my other planning commissioners, if I've missed anything you have a concern about, to amend my approving petition.
Let's, let's-
Mr. Denaro.
Let's see if we can get a support for that first.
I'll, I'll support it.
Okay, Mr. Denaro.
I'd like to just add that there'll be absolutely no parking on Cardwell.
I, I agree with that. Thank you.
That, that's it for me.
Alright.
Mr. Drows.
And, uh, yeah, if, if we could specify that the parking areas are paved in asphalt or concrete, not gravel.
Okay, thank you.
You alright with that?
Yep.
Alright. Anything else from any of my colleagues?
I'm sorry. Can I, can I repeat number ten again, please? I'm sorry.
Mr., number ten of the approving?
Number ten.
Number ten is that there's no outdoor storage of auto parts, equipment, strap, scrap material, waste petroleum products, junked or unlicensed or inoperable vehicles, and that the overhead doors, when not in use for vehicles entering or exiting the facility, shall be closed.
Okay, yeah, so.
Can you please come up the, uh, microphone so?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't have a problem with that at all, but, um, all auto repair shops in the summer, we leave the doors open. It gets too hot in there.
You don't have an air-conditioned facility?
No, not in the auto repair shops. None of them do.
Okay. Uh, that's gonna be up to my colleagues to decide how they wanna proceed with that, but, uh, we appreciate your thoughts on that. Thank you, sir.
No problem, thank you.
Is there anything else from any of, uh, the commissioners as far as the petition, or excuse me, the, uh, motion that's been made, which is approving with a number of modifications? No other modifications? Alright, we, Mr. Yuhasi, you've been able to encapsulate all these, uh, slight little changes?
Yes.
Along the way, okay. So what we have before us is, uh, a motion to approve made by Mr. Ventura, supported by Ms. Denaro, with a number of, uh, modifications based on comments that, and discussion that was made here today. Uh, if there's no, is there any discussion on that motion? If there's no discussion, if the secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura, votes aye. Mrs. Denaro?
Aye.
Mr. Banjero?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Drows?
Aye.
Karen Magno votes no. Mr. Olschau?
Uh, votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to city council with an approving recommendation. And, uh, you'll be heading over to city council. You'll have to have a, a study and a regular meeting there and, uh, they'll make the final decision. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you. Good luck with your project. We have one other item on our agenda. Mr. Secretary?
And that is the approval of the minutes of the one-thousand-two-hundred-twenty-fourth public hearing and regular meeting held by the planning commission on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
All members are present with the exception of Mr. Ventura. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Ms. Denaro, supported by Mr. Banjero. If there's no objection, I think we can safely show six on approving that with Mr. Ventura abstaining. I see no objections, so we'll mark that. That takes us to the end of our meeting. Is there any other business to come before the commission? If there's none, if there's a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Ms. Denaro and Mr. Banjero. And, uh, again, if there's no objections, I think we can safely show seven on that. No objections seen. So we will adjourn the meeting, uh, tonight at, uh, eight-oh-eight PM. I do wanna thank Livonia Television's staff for bringing this meeting to the community. Uh, and, uh, with that, we are gonna end this meeting, again, eight-oh-and-eight PM. Thank you and good night, Livonia.